Alistair Lazari, Katie Carum.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Steve Wang. Diana Clapton.
Here.
All right, would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Do we have a student?
Oh, students.
One moment.
Ryan, would you like to come up and join us?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ryan.
Fantastic.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. America, America. United States, we're a nation of gods. We're so, we're so proud.
Ryan.
Wow.
All right. Well, we have an action-packed beginning of our agenda tonight, so I'm going to turn it right over to Dr. Winkelman.
Yeah, thank you. It's my kind of meeting. We have a lot of students here joining us tonight, so thank you, Ryan, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. For our first item tonight, I'd like to invite Countryside Elementary Student Cade Schwartz, one of our fifth graders at Countryside, to come up and join us for a student report on your school. You're big time, buddy. You get to come up to the big table.
You get to be at the table where your name is.
Welcome. It'll start, it'll just start when you start talking. You're good.
My countryside is our holiday parties.
Oh, here.
Here.
Guess what?
My favorite activity at Countryside is our holiday parties. I love STEM. I love the STEM program at Countryside. In STEM, I take charge of my programming, the work with my partners, and create innovations. When we are, when we are learning in STEM, we can choose what we want to build and how we make it. There are some attractions, but we get to create what we want. In STEM class, we get to design our projects using our own ideas after our teacher provides us with some information and materials. Sometimes in STEM, our design doesn't work or our programming plan doesn't work. Right, so we make adjustments to figure out what went wrong and what we need to fix it. Barrington Countryside Elementary School is the place to be because it is filled with friends, learning, and nice teachers who will help you at any chance they get.
Awesome. I think we have a couple of questions for you, if that's okay. Does anybody have questions? I have a couple. I love STEM. I love STEM too. What is the favorite thing that you have created?
Hummingbird project I did. And I think it was called Animal Garden. I don't remember.
Animal Garden?
Yeah.
So did you have any complications when you were building?
We couldn't get the hummingbird size just right.
So what kind of things did you and your teammates and your teachers have to overcome?
Racing and then just redrawing.
Okay. Nice. And is it, is it, is there a hummingbird at your, at your school right now?
No.
You just designed it?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
How was your first day back after break?
It was good.
I think everyone felt it.
Did you do anything fun over break?
I went to Kentucky to see my cousins.
Yay!
Katie, you talked about your favorite thing being the holiday parties at Countryside. Can you talk about some of your favorites out of those holiday parties and why?
Probably the winter party because there was like limbo. You were able to use like party hoppers to knock balls up cups, and there was like ring toss, kind of.
Sounds very fun.
Very cool.
Very cool.
Very fun.
What's the, what's the one thing that you'd like to show everybody at Countryside if they were to come to Countryside?
You know, I don't really know.
That's okay. Maybe come say hi to the principal?
Which middle school are you going to go to next year? Do you know?
Do you know which middle school you're going to?
Um, Station.
All right.
Well, Katie, thanks for joining us and thanks for sharing a little bit about your experiences at Countryside. You know, this is something we started, you know, last year of having reports for our students to actually share directly from, you know, their perspective, what's going on at our schools. I'm glad you're really enjoying the STEM programming. Obviously, our district made a very committed, intentional step of making sure we have STEM programming and instructional spaces to be able to provide that curriculum. And it's so refreshing to hear from students that you're enjoying those spaces and you're enjoying the experiences in our STEM program, so thanks for coming tonight. Now, we'll round the applause.
Don't go too far.
Kate, one of the things we like to do is, can we take a picture? We have a certificate for you for joining us tonight and sharing about Countryside. Would you take a picture with the board? All right.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else?
Would you like, you know what, we forgot. We just remind, is there anyone here you'd like to recognize or say hi to? Do you have your family or anybody here? Say hi to your parents.
Your principal's here too? Your principal's here? Okay, see you. Awesome. Thank you, Kate. That was awesome. I want to see the humming garden. Hummingbird garden plans. All right, our recognitions continue.
All right, we have another recognition tonight. We have a lot of our student athletes here. I'd like to turn it over to one of our directors for Secondary Student Services, Kat Romero, who's going to introduce our special Olympians.
Hopefully you can hear me now.
Yay.
All right, so we are incredibly excited to be honoring both past and present Barrington 220 Special Olympics athletes tonight. As we reflect back on 2023-2024 sports season, our Special Olympics teams were very, very successful. So we want to highlight some celebrations from last year. One of the biggest highlights from last year was our thrilling basketball win against Hersi High School. We had a great group of fans who packed the BHS Gymnasium to cheer on the Broncos to a 44-31 victory. Our senior Special Olympics basketball team also had the opportunity to play against Judson University athletes and won that competition as well, so very, very exciting opportunity. And our senior team ended the season with a 4-1 record, which is fantastic. Four wins last year out of five games, while our junior team continued to grow and compete for the first time in several years. In track and field, we had two athletes that were able to advance to the state competition where they each medaled in their respective events. So it was a fantastic year we had, yes. On our junior team, we had Liam Meehan, who earned a bronze medal at State for the softball throw, and Kathy Conover, who placed a silver medal at State for the softball throw as well. So we are really excited. Neither of them are here tonight with us, but we wanted to celebrate them and honor them for their, their medals last year. This school year, and we've been off to a really fantastic start, so we wanted to highlight some things that have already been big celebrations for us. So our soccer team and basketball teams elevated their skills through partnership and practice with other Barrington student athletes, including our varsity boys soccer team, our JV girls basketball team, and our varsity boys basketball team. Our Special Olympics senior soccer team won gold in the regional tournament this year, a huge accomplishment. And with the basketball season underway, both our senior and junior teams are engaging in tough competition with some upcoming scrimmages and games that we'll highlight at the end and make sure that we share those dates and activities with everybody. Our Barrington 220 Special Olympics athletes possess a great deal of talent, and behind-the-scenes field and courtside support of their coaches is key. Ms. Jessica Suprenant, Special Olympics Athletic Director and head coach for the senior team, has continued to be an essential advocate and leader for the program. Coach Suprenant has served as the head coach of Special Olympics for the senior soccer, basketball, and track and field team for the past three years. So I'd like to ask Coach Suprenant to stand and introduce our Special Olympics team members and coaches who are here with us this evening.
All right, first up, we have Max Pika. Come on up. Jacob Ripski. Ryan Carden. We have Anhil Zavala. Joshua Wolninski. Ariana Lejoya. And Lyanna Olson. We also have some of our peer coaches here who are essential to our program's success. We have Ford Schmidt. Oliver Gunn. Matt Sullivan Gunn. And then in the back, we have our assistant coach, Megan Sienna. And then I'll leave it off to our junior team coach, Kathy.
So we have our junior team, which has also been growing this year. So our head coach Kathy Iring will be able to introduce the staff and the athletes.
Hi, my name is Kathy Iring, and I'm coaching the junior team. This is our first year altogether with being off a couple of years. So we're starting a whole new program. So let me introduce my coaches first that are helping me. Lizzie and Coach Fish here, they help us out here tremendously. And I'm going to call up the players if you guys can come up by me. Michaela, come on up. Casey, can I get you on up here, buddy? Come stand by us? My guard. Who's my guard? Who's my number one guard there? Who's our shooter? Who's our leader? Christian. And Cormac, come on up here, buddy. And this is our junior Olympic team here. We're missing a couple of people. We also have Gigi on the roster. She's not here. Andre and Noah. Come on, Cormac, right here.
All right, so as we close out our celebration tonight, we wanted to share just about some upcoming events. We'd love to have some support coming out to some upcoming games that we have. So on this Sunday, January 12th, we have our regional tournament with both our junior and senior teams participating. That will be at Jacobs High School. On Monday, January 20th, we have a scrimmage against the varsity boys basketball team with our senior Special Olympics basketball team. And then Friday, January 31st, we have the big game, right, Cormac? We have the big game against Hersi High School. That will be at Hersi High School this year, so we hope that people can come out and celebrate where you're at and cheer us on.
Does the board have any questions?
Just impressed.
Yeah.
Yeah, great job, guys.
Thank you all.
Yes.
Are we doing a, are we doing a photo?
Yes, we are.
We tried to do a photo with you guys?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
All right.
Let's do it.
With the juniors in front.
Did you guys bring people with you tonight? Did you have success?
What's your favorite secondhand picture? Cheesy? Look in the center first. And we'll take, look at the candlestick.
One, two, three. One, two. No Broncos, yeah. Any parents want to come to the center? That's fine. Take your time. These are stars.
They're the stars.
Yeah. Yeah, these are the stars.
All right, one more round of applause.
Are you excited to celebrate?
The garden's worth.
Maybe I don't.
More celebrations.
Okay, just coming up here tonight?
The first meetings. Good meeting.
31st, okay.
More celebrations.
Awesome.
Yes, we can maybe blast those dates out too, so we can even let everyone know. Awesome.
I know, I know.
Absolutely, we love coming. Love the work you're doing there.
We do.
Feel free to move up front now, everybody. You're assigned.
Are you ready?
Yep.
All right, a couple more.
More celebrations. We do, we have two more recognitions. Watch them up and join us, yeah, absolutely. Microphone.
First one.
There we go.
So I'm Dr. Lisa West, and I am the, well, I'm just going to say proud principal at North. That's what I always say. But I also am the Lake Region Director for IPA, the Illinois Principal Association. So both Dr. Berger and I want to thank you for allowing us to honor two very special leaders this evening. As the Region Director for IPA Lake County, we recognize Mrs. Michelle Acosta, who is our Lake County Principal of the Year. And we also want to recognize Mr. Travis Lobens, who's the Middle School Principal of the Year for Lake County. These exemplary leaders demonstrate to us all the characteristics of positive leadership. To elaborate more on their achievements, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Erica Berger, who is our Lake Region Awards Chair. She's going to go into the details of the process as well as next steps, and then we'll award some swag from IPA.
Thank you, Dr. West. You're welcome. So tonight, I am proud to honor both Michelle and Travis. Through a very rigorous process, they were both selected by Lake Region Illinois Principals Association Board to receive the Elementary School and the Middle School Principal of the Year awards. The Principal of the Year Award takes a deep dive into the candidate's professional history, their practice, their application of leadership, and how they shape an overall community. There are five questions that the candidates needed to answer to display their commitment to leadership. How have you evaluated and shaped your school's culture to foster emotional and physical well-being and safety? What have you done to promote equity for students and staff in your school? How do you involve students and staff in organizational decision-making and provide opportunities to empower them to be leaders? How are you leading learning, excuse me, how are you leading and learning different instruction in your school to ensure that students will succeed in a global society? And finally, when you reflect on data, how has your leadership impacted student achievement? After candidates had submitted responses to these questions, they then had to receive approval from their superintendent and submit three letters of reference to highlight their connection to high-quality education. Dr. Winkelman quickly approved both candidates and highlighted how their commitment to the community has greatly impacted student performance from early childhood to middle school. Michelle and Travis, on behalf of the Illinois Principals Association, we thank you for your dedication and your superior leadership. If you could please come up to receive your official plaque. You're welcome. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Snag bag.
Congratulations.
Awesome. Did you guys bring anybody with you tonight to share in your recognition?
Wait a minute, you're not getting out of here that easy. Hold on, hold on, hold on. First, first and foremost.
Good try.
We, you know, from a district perspective, thank you, Illinois Principals Association, for recognizing. I think it's incredibly important. We have tremendous leaders here in Barrington and throughout the region, right? And, you know, recognizing that type of leadership is important. And certainly Travis and Michelle reflect that, that type of leadership and commitment to students here in Barrington, but also throughout the area. So really, you know, truly blessed to have both of these individuals in our district. And I just want to give you an opportunity. Do you guys want to say a few words as far as, you know, this award or your experiences in Barrington before you skedaddle tonight?
I mean, I want to thank the IPA. I've been a part of them for 23 years now, and it's such a good and healthy organization for leaders to just have other people to go to who are doing the same thing you do every single day to help. But really, it's, 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 I'm sure Michelle, it's the same thing. It's our staff. And, you know, the award is won because of our staffs and the things they do that help us so much within this community and, and Dr. Winkelman and all of our colleagues. But I actually think, you know, Michelle does such a great job. I think she won the award for both buildings. But I'll let Michelle.
No, I want to just echo what Dr. Lobens or Mr. Lobens said. I just want to thank Dr. Winkelman, exec, obviously, Dr. Winkelman and everyone here, just for the support. I'm very supportive in this district, but I just want to thank you for the support that you provide ELC. So thank you, thank you.
Awesome.
Well, I don't think it's a coincidence that Prairie and the ELC are right next to each other. I think you feed off each other's energy and positive spirit, and we're really fortunate to have both of you in our district, so congratulations. And I don't think you can escape without a picture with the board.
That's right.
And our IPA award chair, so don't leave yet.
Any other board members?
Any other questions?
Congratulations.
Restless, congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. I want to say yes and because I think your impact goes even beyond ELC and middle school into the whole community and the students in this district, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next steps for Travis and Michelle is that their applications will be forwarded on to the state level where they will then be reviewed, just like our board reviewed and selected, and then will be notified February. Yeah, I think it's in February will be notified, and you'll be notified whether or not you're moving on to the state position. If that happens, then a conference in October, they would be honored at the conference as the elementary or middle school principals of the state. Just the region. So that's the next step for their application.
Awesome, exciting.
Good luck in the process.
Photo, photo. We love photos.
Wait, award chair? Yeah, you're standing.
Thank you.
I know.
I think there are sequins, but I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Oh, we're talking nose. I couldn't find, I wanted a plant.
I love that. So I'm like, where are the sequins? Their boots, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Slightly things to celebrate.
Very much so.
All right, that was awesome. I'm going to just keep things moving and start with my report. It's not very long.
Great.
Yeah, no?
Yeah.
I just want, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say Happy New Year and welcome again to our first board meeting in the calendar year 2025. Thank you so much to our outstanding principals to Cade and all of our amazing students for great representation of enthusiasm and empowering personal excellence in every learner. On board, I just, it's a short report this week. I just want to remind you that we have our EdRed Dinner coming up. If you want to go, please let Janine know if you want to attend. Looking at Janine over there. I got to look over here now. And then I wanted just to highlight a couple places to be that I saw in the district calendar or district newsletter this, this, this week. I think it's exciting. We've got the Student Services hosting Special Education Parent Advisory Sessions in January through April, so see the district newsletter for those dates. We also have the Giordano Choreography Project. I think this is something I don't think I've missed in the past eight years. It's a really great way to see not just the Giordano dance. It's a really great way to see not just the Giordano dancers and our, and our orchestras dancers from Barrington High School, but you get to witness other area high school dancers as well for collaborative performance on Saturday, January 18th at 7:00 PM. And then I also wanted to highlight our Special Olympics basketball game that we already heard about on January 31st at 6:00 PM at Hershey High School. And that concludes my report. Next up is public comment, and we didn't have anyone signed up, so we will move right into your report, Dr. Winkelman.
All right, thank you. Get it up on the screen here. You're good. You're good. We're demonstrating flexibility.
Flexibility and adaptability.
Yes, all of that. So I also want to welcome everybody back. We've had four days of school since our last board meeting with the two weeks off for winter break. So I don't have a lot to share as far as things that have occurred since our last board meeting. So I thought I would do something different tonight. I'm actually gonna preview some of the things that lie ahead for the second semester as far as what we'll be discussing at our board meetings and specifically some highlights connected to our strategic plan. So for this spring, the very next meeting, we'll start to talk about Transform 220. We have been hard at work putting together the structures and the individuals that lead part of that process. We will have our first Transform 220 presentation as we kick off that initiative. And then we'll continue to have updates and reports along the way as we continue to progress through the process. We have design plans to share with the board, bid packages, build updates and so forth over the next four years. So very exciting. Of course, just go back one slide, Janine. That's okay. We'll do budget planning as we always do at our very next meeting during the committee of the whole. Our calendar committee has been meeting and, you know, as a community, we've adopted the practice of not just looking out one calendar year, but really trying to help our community understand what our student schedule and calendar will look like for multiple years. So we'll be bringing up proposal for the 2627 school year this spring. And then we will have updates from some of our different groups. We'll have a technology and innovation update. We'll do a teaching and learning and equity update this spring. They'll, both of those groups will have a formal presentation. And then we alternate every other year, whether we have our PTO President's Council or our Ed Foundation. Both groups are incredibly supportive and certainly assist with all of the amazing things that our district provides to our community. And we alternate. This year in the spring, the Educational Foundation will come and, and provide an update and presentation to the board. So that's just things to look forward to as we look to the year ahead for 2025. I gotta get used to saying that. I still catch myself. And then specifically with framework, right? So we're in year two of a five-year strategic plan. We're making really nice progress this year with some of our new objective areas. So the area of social media and digital citizenship. We've had two presentations from that group at the board in the fall. We've had a number of focus groups occur where we're gathering more information directly. And we've actually, I think Dr. Fuller had alluded to, we were looking at partnership with Devora Heitner, one of the books that we're reading. She has actually joined us and is now participating in the work and will help guide and inform our work. So that's something that we will be continuing in the spring and we'll have another update for the board during the second semester. And then Comprehensive Professional Development Plan. The board may recall, one of our objectives is really about making sure that our professional development is connected to these different objective areas. So making sure that equity is something that we're providing professional development. We actually did, all of our elementary teachers participated in a half-day professional development yesterday, right before the kids came back. The staff was back yesterday. And our next institute day in February on the 14th, we'll have a secondary. The middle and high school teachers will participate. But in addition to equity, one of our strategic objective areas is authentic learning. We're going to provide that comprehensive professional development around authentic learning for the whole organization as well as continuing to have professional development opportunities related to our SEL curriculum and Character Strong and so forth. So we're embedding some of the elements of our framework in our work with our strategic plan will become part of our long-range comprehensive professional development plan. And then we've had a lot of conversations, you know, particularly throughout the summer months, we're really trying to think through our infrastructure and facilities plan and our long-range planning. We will have presentations to share with the board with some updates on some of the requests that the board made around us, really thinking about our long-range facility planning and how do we consider possibly increasing the funding for our capital projects? So that'll be coming up during the second semester as well. So things to look forward to.
Exciting.
Yeah. And that concludes my report.
Any questions? Okay. Let's move on to informational reports. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll go right on to board committee reports. Finance met today.
Yes, finance met today. We had a meeting right before our board meeting. Two issues or two subjects we talked about was about the 2025 registration technology fees. All families will be assessed before the start of the next school year. And the good news is we're gonna keep everything flat. This is gonna be just one small item. There's gonna be a fee increase recommendation for 50 cents for the ID replacement to reflect the higher costs associated with the new scanning system. So because it's more expensive to produce the IDs, we're gonna charge a bit more. But otherwise, all other fees are gonna be flat, which is great. We don't, we're not, we're not anticipating any, any increases. And this recommendation will be brought to the full board at the first meeting in February. We're not gonna talk, we're not gonna do it at the next meeting because that's the committee of the whole. So first meeting in February, we'll, we'll finalize that. And then we spent a little bit of time forecast planning, getting ready for the committee of the whole. Our next board meeting is the committee of the whole, so we examined some forecast assumptions that largely affect our planning. We talked specifically about CPI, the Consumer Price Index, and interest earning assumptions. We continue to be very conservative with interest earnings and await the final CPI 2024. We haven't gotten it yet, but hopefully it'll be available for our next meeting. And we look forward to having a robust discussion at the committee of whole about, you know, the next year and planning for long, long-range forecast.
Excellent. Any other committee reports? I meant to look, Diana, did we find somebody to attend Equity this week? We did? Okay, you're gonna go.
Are you going to?
I'm going to. Yeah.
I'll be there.
Thank you. I did not, I wanted to make sure that we, we had that covered on Thursday. Okay, so let's move on to our action items. We'll start with the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have on our consent agenda tonight, both open and closed minutes from December 17th, as well as a revised personnel report. Pretty short. Any questions or comments? All right, let's do a roll call.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chandang.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We have a series of action items this evening. I'll just try to do, give a very brief description of each one of them. All of them are things that we've talked about in the last several meetings, but just to make sure people understand what we're, what we're talking about. Do we have a motion to approve the IASV Vision 2030?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we talked about this at our last meeting. There is a resolution that came from the state of Illinois asking us to adopt. And we saw, we saw a quick video at our last meeting of what Vision 2030 is all about. My very short representation is that we're well already in alignment with Vision 2030 and maybe even ahead of the game, but just for community members to understand what we're, what we're voting on. Are we ready to do a roll call? All right, let's do it.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chandang.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next, do we have a motion to approve the summer school fees? As presented.
So moved. Second.
All right. We had a brief overview of this at our, at our last meeting as well. I think Barry, you gave us a, an update from, about this one. We also have a memo on this. Summer school fees will be increasing. Let me pull up the memo, make sure I say the right numbers, by its 11%, little over 11% for the academic courses and the camps. This is to keep in line with, we typically run at a deficit for summer school, and this is just basically keeping us to the same amount of the deficit for, for the coming year. Any questions or comments beyond that?
I should just add that the main driver for the increase is that we've increased the summer school compensation for our staff. Contract that we just agreed to, to try to attract and keep our staff from going to other districts in the summer, we've increased what we're offering them to teach summer school and we want to at least keep that, you know, even, so it's not a deficit.
Yeah, and I think it's also maybe important to point out too that I looked at the, what we're asking the families to pay for summer school, and it's pretty reasonable and, and in line with other districts as well. All right, with that, do we want to do a roll call?
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Erin Chandang.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the Triple I expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we discussed these at our, actually, we discussed all the activity that happened at Triple I at our last meeting. And we also were presented that for what these expenses would be a few meetings ago as well. So if there's no questions or comments, let's do a roll call.
Erin Chandang.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the bid award for the 2025 paving maintenance project?
So moved.
Second.
All right. This is a pretty standard, is your recommendation to select the lowest qualified bidder here for, this is the paving across the entire district, right? Yes, three parking lots at Barrington High School. Are there any other questions or comments?
Sarah, any?
I was just gonna mention, the three parking lots at the high school were alternates. And with the passing of one of our referendums, that helped us decide what we were going to accept on the alternates, not just based on price.
Field of dreams.
So Lincoln Lot was part of that, but with all of the new construction, we'll continue to have traffic, which is the lot closest over here. That's one of the reasons we decided to not go with the alternates.
Got it. Thank you. Trying to read quickly here. All right, let's do a roll call.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Erin Chandang.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the bid award for the 2025 rejuvenator, rejuvenator project?
So moved. Second.
All right, very similar.
I really wish Leah was here because she loves.
She loves rejuvenator.
That's true.
I'll just say, this is also a variety of schools and the rejuvenator we do after we've done the paving a couple of years prior to extend the life of the paving project.
Thank you. All right, let's do a roll call.
Erin Chandang.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the bid award for the 2025 Grove Roofing Project?
So moved.
Second.
All right, pretty explanatory there. I don't think we need to say too much more.
Just, this is one of the added projects that we have put on for summer of '25 to increase our capital someday.
Excellent. All right, let's do a roll call.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Erin Chandang.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Motion passes. Last action we have, do we have a motion to approve the bid award for 2025 for North Barrington and Barbara Rose Elementary Roofing Project?
So moved. Second.
All right, I think that one's pretty self-explanatory. Anything you want to highlight there?
Nope. Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Erin Chandang.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right.
All this hard work.
Wow. Well, we actually, we don't have any discussion items this evening, so we do not intend to adjourn right now. We do need to go back into closed session. Thank you again, everybody, for your patience for us getting us a little bit of a late start. And I'm pleasantly surprised that we are wrapping up within an hour, even starting late. So we will adjourn. We do not expect to take any further action, any further discussion, and we will see you in a couple weeks at our committee of the whole.
Sounds good. All right, thank you.